Did that help any of you?
I haven't gotten it yet. I'll get with you later. Appreciate it. And have a good one. Say.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our Dillon County Council meeting, uh, regular meeting, third of March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, five P. M. Uh, we're gonna start out by standing in the same place as the leaders.
Ladies and to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As councilman's title would be, it's an implication.
We're glad to. Thank you, sir.
Will you pray with me?
As heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and this beautiful weather that you've given us to North. We ask that you grant us the wisdom and judgment we need, make the debt, make the best provisions and decisions possible for this county. Please keep us friendly and minimal our actions with each other. Help us to act in the best interest of this county, keep our agendas in the best interest of the citizens and not ourselves. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I thought it was quite a little one shoe. Number four, approval of agenda requires a motion.
I'm making motion that we put in the agenda.
Motion is second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Number five, approval minutes, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, requires a motion. Motion is second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Any opposed? Six, ordinance reading, number twenty-three dash zero one, third reading. An ordinance to change zoning map classification from commercial to residential for the purpose of residing in a residence on the parcel. Minimum requirement does not apply to the extension of an existing district. Tax map number zero seven zero dash zero three dash zero zero dash zero four six, consisting in one point five three acres. Property owner, Jere Magira Agueste. Purpose location, twenty-one forty-five, highway nine east, Dillon South Carolina, two nine five three six, requires a motion. Make that motion. Now, motion is second, I think. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seven, ordinance, number twenty-three dash zero two, third reading. Ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park of Dillon and Marlboro Counties, so as to enlarge the park. Requires a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second.
Second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number eight, ordinance reading, number twenty-three dash zero three, second reading, Dillon County Dirt Road Acceptance and Maintenance Ordinance Reading. A proposed ordinance that provides for and allows the process for the county to accept dirt roads that meet certain criteria that meet the criteria of first reading of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number nine, council request.
We have the Latin Spring Fest. They're asking for a donation. So that more for cause of their motor stage. And this they're gonna be, you'll be sponsored. And listed on the Blue Hill website. And they'll have Baron at the website, so they're asking for a donation.
I'll give fifty. Don't even leave it. Don't even leave it. I can do it.
And do sell alcohol, don't make a thing of it.
I don't make big of it. I'll get it.
I give fifty to that as well.
Next, we have the Rude Church Basketball Tournament. A building project. We have at the Little Rock Park on Saturday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And the proceeds will go toward the new building of the Rude Church of Jesus Christ. Just so I would narrate my donation.
I give fifty.
Next, we have the First Step, Dillon County. Barry Christian, you join the First Step, they have given on, on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. This day is dedicate to, dedicated to charity of the given. And it sees that they are non-profit organization that has prepared children for school. When is the date? April twenty-fifth?
I think I have my over here again.
Okay, First Steps. The First Steps, um, of Dillon County, Barry Christian, they're just going. The day of giving on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
You didn't hear the Latin Spring Fest?
I wanted to hear the Latin Spring Fest.
Oh, okay. I thought that was. Okay, the Latin Spring Fest, that's gonna be on April fifteenth. And Barry Christian, a donation, they're gonna have a stage. And they'll have your name, Mr. Dean with Dillon Harold. So they're just asking for donations and you, you'll be, um, recognized by.
He said a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars. The Rude Chor- Church Basketball Tournament. The Rude Church Basketball Tournament for their building fund project.
A little basketball, fifty dollars for that.
One hundred dollars?
Fifty.
Fifty? Okay. And the First Steps of Dillon County, Barry Christian, um, a donation. That you're doing the Dillon County First Step, they're giving, and it's on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I give a hundred.
I give a hundred to the show.
And I'll give a hundred.
For the American Youth June's Board State Program. Barry Christian, financial support to help this elected delegates from Dillon School, Dillon School. Dillon, Dillon Christian School, Dillon High School, Latta High School, and make you to attend Palmetto Board State.
I give fifty.
A hundred dollars for that. I give fifty to that too.
I give fifty. I will take much better.
And me also.
Support the steam pumps. The Latta High School Robotics Club. They won South Carolina State Championship on Saturday, February twenty-fifth, in Halyndy, South Carolina. And now they're going for the, um, the world competition. And they're asking for a donation.
I give a hundred, Joe.
I give a hundred.
I give fifty.
I'll give fifty also.
The Lakeview. Twelve year and ten year recreational basketball teams, they're going to the South Carolina State Championships. And they're asking for a donation.
Any more to go with that, Miss Groove? And I'll give a hundred to him against his species.
The Lakeview Revitalization Committee, we seeking donations to fund the revitalization, the revitalization and renovation within Lakeview downtown area. And we'd like to invite you to be a part of that.
I give fifty to that.
Get two hundred to that.
Angel Paul Chapman Memorial Golf Tournament. It's gonna be held April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, one o'clock P. M. At Cedar Dillon Municipal Golf Course in Dillon. I also see benefit the Dillon Athletic Department.
Give a hundred. It requires a motion.
I make that motion.
Got a motion in a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number ten, Vanessa Jackson, Care of South Carolina Medicaid and Chipping Room.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vanessa Jackson, and I'm from Care of South Carolina. I am a community health navigator, and I am for Dillon County. Um, but I'm from Florence, but they gave me Dillon County to work with, and which I am glad to be a part of Dillon, because I didn't know all the things over here that was liking and the things that you guys have over here. So I'm happy to be a part of Dillon County and to, um, work with, um, the, the different businesses and everything around here. So, uh, what I'm gonna talk about is called the Medicaid unwinding. Um, we all know during the pandemic that there was, um, a bill came down that, um, enabled people to get on Medicaid due to COVID-nineteen. A lot of them lost their coverage, they lost their job, so they were able to get on Medicaid. So it's gonna end May the eleventh. For all, all the ones that's been on Medicaid, it's gonna come to an end. So everyone that's been on Medicaid forever, they need to go back and everybody's gotta reapply again. If they don't, then Medicaid will be drawn. So that's what I'm here to talk about. Um, you're gonna get letters, well, they're gonna get a letter in the mail. And some of them not gonna get letters because they moved and relocated since COVID. So they're not gonna receive the letters. And so, um, in the papers that I gave you all, we are trying to go in the neighborhood. I'm going to the schools around here, putting up these, they're putting up the flyers for us. And they can scan the barcode. They gotta make sure that their information is updated through, um, DHH's office. If not, their coverage will drop and there will be a gap in it. But they won't lose it, but it'll be a drop in their, a gap in their Medicaid, but it will retro back. But some people will not, um, be eligible for Medicaid again. So this last sheet. What talks about healthcare.gov. Some won't qualify for Medicaid, but some will qualify for insurance due to healthcare.gov. So I am a enrollment specialist. I do the Medicaid, I, I can do the Medicaid as well. But I am an enrollment specialist for healthcare.gov. My contact number is up here and also in the flyer, um, this one eight-hundred number. That number will come directly to us to keep, um, the people from going to the DHH's office. And we can do it as well at Care South. So we are a, we are set up to do, um, all this stuff at Care South, keep, um, people from going to the office down there. And we have, um, community health workers throughout all our Care South. And we have thirteen different locations. If y'all don't know about Care South, we have thirteen different locations. And what makes us different from any other healthcare, we have everything under one roof. We have family practice, pediatric women's care, behavioral health counseling lab, radiology, ultrasound, chiropractic, dental care, family support services, substance abuse program, infectious disease, and senior support services, and we have community pharmacies. So we have everything under one roof. So if you know of anybody that would lose their Medicaid or either don't have insurance, we do see people, um, who don't have insurance. We put them on a slack link according to their income. So for more information, you can just call us, um, at Care South. And anything you want to know, you can just call us for information. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming. Number eleven, Laverne Sellers and Reverend Allen Robinson, community grievances pertaining to Germantown Place.
Chair, please. I spoke with our council member a while back. We discussed some things about Germantown Place. How did the county come out with resources to take care of a problem we threw away? And it seems as though we didn't prepare mentally, the very least that they could do. One request, a minimal request was to declare a ditch that was causing water to back up into the neighborhood, which one of the residents has to go out in the rain day. Declare a trench for the water to go back to a ditch that's pushing the water out. When the county came out to clear a ditch, to clear the pathway of debris, the trees that we spoke about, they damaged the roots of the trees. So eventually those trees would die and end up, end up back in the, in the ditch. So I just don't understand the logic behind bringing resources out at that time and not utilizing them to do the job properly the first time. If the resources are always limited in the county. The second thing I bring up to you is the entrance way. Both them on the same day, there's an agreement with a private owner in the, in the community, to the state as far as hauling dirt out of Germantown Place. The trucks are down to the entrance way. So when the school buses, the vehicles, the little tracks are trying to leave the exit. So either they need to find a new entrance, or either they need to be liable, responsible for fixing the entrance. The county or the resident should be responsible for that. The last thing would be the lights east of number nine. It's dark. Hitch black. So we're up against all the trucks coming out of the door, trying to get out of the residence at Germantown Place. Something has to happen. I know that's a state highway, but coordination with the state and the county, something should never be done. The lights put along east of number nine. And those are our concerns. We just, we would appreciate the same level of service that you guys provide in the other parts of the county. Me and Pastor Robson rode around District Six, didn't pinpoint any places, but just to look around and see what the conditions were in other neighborhoods. It's a lot different where we stand. So we just, we demand the same level of service as in other parts of the county.
What were you saying about a truck, the entrance?
The entrance way to Germantown Place. It's constantly digging up the pavement, the entrances that are on the entrance way. And we're the ones that had to turn it up if the county goes out to put the, what do you call this stuff? The asphalt, the, uh, the seal, they put that down every time, every two, three weeks and, and that got there again. So we're, we're footing the bill for something that two parties have an agreement on. They should be putting that bill. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I say so.
Maybe Kenny, I think you might, you can give your number and you can look at it.
Anything you can hit me on me.
I've got a list of it.
I've got a list of it. I can tell you one of the issues with the dicks we talked about. Um, so when you come, when you turn in to Germantown, you go down the road. The property on that side of the dirt road, there's a swamp that's over there. So whenever Jerry went and dug it out, I questioned the same thing. I was like, you know, you just did a little bit. He told me, he said, Kenny, if I go too much deeper with it, the neighboring property, which they don't own, he's fearing that the swamp is gonna come back in that ditch and might make more of a mess. That was just one, you know, one thing that he spoke of that it could be.
I'll give it to you.
Yeah. But like I said, it is, um, that, that road can maybe be tapered this way a little bit because there was a house right in the corner, and when it rains, all the water does run in and out.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Number twelve, Wayne W. Green Senior, you have approval of recreation.
Get in. First, I wanna say, uh, thank the councilman, the councilman Lane, what the job y'all doing. I know it difficult. I wanna talk to you about time. Years ago, when I was a young boy, we had nice parks. But, of course, time. Time is not on the outside. And right now, about a month ago, I went to take my grandkids to the park. And guess what? I had to leave because I was really disappointed. I got mad, but then I, I calmed down and I said, you know what? It's not only on the councilors, it's on our citizens too. We got a job to do to maintain the parks. But we need to help. The parks need to be updated. Equipment is, is a hazard. I'm coming pleading to you. Is there anything out there that we can do to make the parks better for our grandkids? I'm gonna tell you that some parks has been abandoned. Actually, they need to be pulled up and restarted. It's like they got no intention. Nobody's going out there. I did see the signs of grass cutting because the grass wasn't really hot. But the basketball gold, concrete is missing. Golds is rusted down, pulled up, monkey bars is pulled up, has fallen over to the side. And this is not a place for our kids. I did find out some kids, they, they're abandoning and coming downtown and using their parks. Well, you know, so many comes is gonna create a problem. If they go to the churches, the churches, that's their park. For members only, they let you come for certain at the time. But if so many come, that's why they do, they close the gate. So that's gonna put our kids back out there. They're not using a park. We don't have places for picnics for families to go and sit down. At one time, I think, you know, in, on Van Hall Road, the park out in Rivendell, it had restrooms at one time. Problem occurred back then. That was back then. Times now, our kids have to go relieve themselves in the, in the wood line between the park and somebody else's park.
Way up to that building, it's not out there.
It's not out there. And I think it's part of the problem was, is, um, it kept getting damaged. I think that was part of the problem. So someone decided to tear it down, which that was a bad problem, I think, because when something gets torn up, you fix it. And you keep fixing it. You wreck a car, you fix it until you can't fix it no more, so you get it over. Um, I think now time has changed. And we should do as much as we can for our kids.
But if somebody, you let somebody drive your car and they keep wrecking, you let, you stop them from driving.
You gonna stop them. That's true. That is true. Uh, I feel as though the way I think you stop some of the things, you can't stop, we know crime is rising. It's rising everywhere. But if we give a, a place, a safe haven for our kids to go with their families, to burn off some of this engine, law enforcement won't be as busy as they are sometimes. They have a place to go and relax with their families. I don't know the steps that they do now for parks. Who is the oldest here? Years ago, when I was coming up, they always been a go-to person. That if you wanted to rent the, the picnic area for that, for Saturday, you get with them and, and they'll say, well, you know, no one's gonna be there. You can do it. You have the barbecue and everything for the family. I don't know if we have that now. I don't know if we got a go-to person. So, um, I probably wanna ask the council, if the citizens was form a committee to try to curb some of the costs. We would have to come back here to you to see what your, what your steps is, because that is county property. We just can't go out there and do what we wanna do. But if you, would you stand behind us?
Wayne, um, I would like to say I have been working, um, with council. We have changed administrators three times since I've been here. We, I just recently addressed the issue again with our new administrator. We have taken steps, have been taking steps to get the parks, um, worked on. I think we have a park grant. Um, I've taken pictures, and I've also been in the community, and I told Mr. Tim, Mr. Harper. That once the stuff is ordered and it's in the process of being ordered as we speak, that, um, the boys out there from the Sands, I met with some of them. Uh, when I was out there taking pictures and seeing what needs to be done in Rivendell, um, they said they want to come together and do, like you said, as a community, as a group. So as soon as the stuff comes in, we're gonna get together and go out there to Rivendell and do some painting, try to get, well, get the basketball goals fixed, but, and do some things to Oakland. Oakland is in way worse condition than Rivendell, you know, way worse. Oakland look like it has not had anything done to it in over twenty years. But I would like to say that we are working on it. I have been working on it. Um, the only thing we have went through, three administrators, and each time someone leaves, you have to talk to the new person who's in charge. But you will see some improvements before the summer. Another thing that I wanna, um, address, once we get, once we get this stuff out there, once we begin to work on our parks, like you said, we're gonna have to come together as a community and keep that. Another thing that we have to do, because I, I have a park down the road from my house. And no kids are out there, only people at the parks are drug dealers. So we're gonna have to make that location safer for our children. So it's gonna take a whole community to rebuild these parks and make it a safe haven again for our children. So I'm willing to work with you. I'm glad you came and, you know, with open mind. So I'm just looking forward to working with you and the community to rebuild in Oakland and District Three. So as soon as the stuff comes, I will give you a call and see what we can do together.
That'll be great. Um, one other thing, um, don't forget about Hamel Park.
Where the Hamel Park?
Back behind the school.
It's behind the school.
Yeah. And see, at one time, they had it shut out at one time. And so I don't know, I mean, is it a conflict with the school to revitalize that park? I, I mean, you understand what I'm saying? Because you know, you do have them, them, them five-year-olds and six-year-olds at this school. You know, is that a park that we should abandon and move to a different location and get from behind that school? Because I would hate to have a problem at the school, because I rode around last week to the parks, because we had a meeting about it, and I rode around. And I'm gonna tell you, I did not see not one child at none of the parks on the weekend. I seen cars parked on the basketball court. I mean, that's the, you know, that's the issue we're gonna have to address. The main focus is, we got, we got to keep the cars out of the parks because, and I don't know, they don't, and you know.
Well, I, I can tell you, if they're, my point of view, if their car is parked in the park, nine times out of ten, they may be doing something they shouldn't have been doing. If it's something out the dark. Sometimes they're not doing anything, which is sick. Kids, the reason I feel as though the kids are not there, is shame that the parks are here. Hamel Park, in my understanding, is across the street from my church. The church used to use the Hamel Park. I know, councilman, you probably know it, and you just got, you just got, you just got thrown a fish. Nobody told you what he caught it for. It's back there. If you go was to go back there and drive it, you would shake your head.
And I didn't even know they were.
It's the worst one in Dillon County.
There's a baseball field back there. There's a basketball court back there.
Nobody goes to Rivendell Park, because we ain't got one. Just saying.
Chairman, I would like to say something.
We need to work on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say I made a request to the county, and I asked that grass be cut. For, the grass was cut. Somebody asked me to practice there this weekend. Drive a ball team, wanted to practice. For, the grass was cut, somebody asked me to practice there this weekend, travel ball team wanted to practice on the field. They wanted to realize that the park, just like everybody else, they gotta do that. County did cut the grass, the county did pick up the paper. Terry was there, Jerry was there, and they sprayed the dugouts. Some kind of weed killer, something kill the grass anyway, trying to make it do better. And I do, do know that you have requested funds for the basketball court. You know, I don't know where we stand on that, I assume we're still in the asking, hoping to get that.
And they're gonna be working on cleaning.
And that was one of the councilmen Miller, that worked on a couple of years ago.
And we, we usually, there are potty jocks during the summer. So, usually the administrator send potty jocks to all of the parks. I know all of mine usually have potty jocks, Rivendell and Oakland.
Do we know, um, what the cost would be to, to rebuild? The stalls in the bathrooms in Rivendell? I would think the, the circuit tank, is everything is still there in the water? What would it cost?
I mean, can I say one thing? Bathroom wide open at a park is gonna be a pull-up. And, and, and that's anywhere.
Yeah.
Because I'm gonna be honest with you. If you didn't have people working at the schools, taking, watching the kid, they get tore up there, but you got somebody watching them every, every minute, every hour. It's just, a, a, and, and kids are gonna be kids. And, and feasibly, it's, it's not feasible to keep fixing stuff every time somebody tears it up. I mean, at some point, somebody's gotta be accountable.
Can I suggest something?
Yeah.
If we was to, years ago, when the, when the, uh, the bathroom was there. Now, we have more law enforcement officers that should be patrolled. I'm not just saying, if it was possible, could we partner with the sheriff and get him? I know it's gonna be hard because just like you said, they, they can't be there twenty-four seven.
Y'all worried about people shooting because of my terrible bathroom.
No, but, um, I'm just saying, it would look more better for the public than you driving down the road and seeing them. People relieving themselves right there, whatnot. I mean, it would be better. Um, some places there would call that, that where you get charged for it. But I'm just saying, could we go and can we look at that?
So, you don't think the potty jocks is?
That, that's a great idea. It is, really is a great idea. Um, the next day would be running water. I know it's quick with running water.
The town of Loudon, they got those nice baseball fields and, and they got bathrooms and stuff, and they, they don't have those, they put complaints. And now the people say they can't use them in such bad shape.
Well, that's not your rec department, that's not your rec department, just like having bathrooms out here, these rec departments, we talking about individual parts.
But they can't, um, the town of Loudon, they got a, a man that stays in there about all day long and he still can't.
They still, look, the city of Dillon's got their bathrooms out there at the, at the rec field, they did not, they go out there and they tear them up. They knock them down.
They, they ain't got what it's for, parking.
They'd have to lock them up.
Can I ask this question? If we was to have something at a park, a potty, could they get them there whenever they requested?
Where the potty?
Or whether they have the potty jocks?
They usually are there at, at the beginning of the spring, they use it to put them at every park, at the beginning of the spring. Rivendell had one last year, Oakland had one.
Wayne, you know, the, the park's gonna be closed at night soon, but if there's any way of having somebody to lock it, they can't lock it.
They not have, that's, that's, they usually are not out there.
If you have a, I would think that we can get that, uh, the oversea of the parks, where someone would actually check on the parks and be over the park. And most of the time, it'd be someone in that community. Uh, years ago, I remember a few of them, the last one I think was Michael Bryce over in one Rivendell. And that was the person to go to. Um, I would think it would be a help if you had oversea. I mean, I, I, like you said, it can't be there twenty-four seven. Uh, the, the bathroom stayed out there for years. And of course, uh, someone decided to tear it. But I'm not saying, I, I would see equipment first.
And that's the one thing before, you know, you made the statement, all the times have changed and it has.
Yeah.
You know, when I, I'm not old, but whenever I was way younger, we was held way more accountable by our parents.
Oh, yeah.
You tear somebody's bathroom, you got to stay for it. Now, that's not the same. I, I mean, that's what they do, you know, you got these twenty-nine-year-olds or thirteen-year-olds and.
That's, that's, that's when we bring the law enforcement, let them patrol and do their job. Leave it, leave their job to them.
But it is something to look at, our, our parks do it.
It needs to, because I'm, right now, we don't have, they want to go out, we want our kids to go out. Get out of the house, um, and enjoy it, but they don't have. And of course, time changes, things are a lot dangerous today, but.
And technology.
Yeah. If we could, uh, one more question. Did we ever get a total price of what it would cost, if I can take back to the citizens in the here, guys? If I, if I have a price and I say, look here, we, let's do our, let's do our part, let's try to help the county council out and come close to this where we can help and get a place for our kids.
For new equipment, um, this was last year. I had gotten some quotes, I can get it to you, I don't have a wifery. Um, but I did have Vernon to look into it so that we could go to the state and try to get some money this upcoming year. So, it's, um, when I go back, let's see if I can buy it now. It's not cheap at all.
I know it's not.
That's just the type you have to use.
I think, uh, I can say, I think the city, when they, they park out there, it probably costs a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, you know, that was from dirt bottom though, you know? Of course, the park that we have wouldn't cost that, it gonna be a cost.
That one big slide they got, it was probably sixty thousand, seventy thousand.
Two hundred and some thousand dollars to get like.
Have to repair the whole?
Yeah, the redo, um, equipment. Put some picnic tables out there. Um, you know, update equipment with the plastic instead of the metal. Also, I have a vision of putting some shelter over the, where they place softball at, the benches.
Yes.
Put some shelters over there.
It was, it was actually me, um, to bring this, uh, a walkway around that property, the county property, that park.
A walking.
A walking.
I didn't include that, but that's something that we can look at.
That, that would get, let me tell you, what that would do, it would get the mamas out there walking and the kids ain't gonna do anything while their mamas out there walking.
You would think.
That's true, that's true, that's true.
Terrible.
They would like a walking, a walking, uh, just a walk park around it.
Yeah, I have a girlfriend that actually do walk there every morning, so.
You get a spot, you would take care of all these parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
But we are gonna work on it, I don't mind sitting down with you coming up with some ideas, especially for the Oakland and Rivendell. I'm gonna take a look tomorrow at the one in Hamer, I had a little cookie that was a fork in Hamer.
Right behind the school.
Right, I mean, run the curve past church and get right to the right.
I would definitely take a look at that tomorrow.
Thank y'all for y'all's time, I'm sorry I took so much of your time, but keep doing the job that y'all doing, okay?
Thank you.
Cannot be excused. Okay.
Thirteen committee appointments. I got any committee?
I do.
Okay. We start with, uh, District One, you have, uh, District Two, District Three.
I have three. Um, the grievance committee, I have Sarah Samuel. For the Public and Private Economic Development Board, I have Tim Falk.
Say that again, uh, which committee?
Um, Public and Private Economic Development Board, Tim Falk. And State Commission, um, Sunny McCray.
District Four, you got any?
Uh, I, I got some I need to get, I thought I had many to do.
District Five?
Um, yes, um, the library board, I have Ms. Jackie Thompson, Thomas. Um, what was my other two, one was, uh.
Tax Appeal Board.
Tax Appeal Board was Jordan Grimsley.
The grievance committee?
That was, no, I don't have one for the grievance, the other one was.
The board is on there.
That was Timmy Townsend. I'm still trying to hunt one for the grievance. Try to ask them for it, right?
District Six, you got any?
Yeah, uh, we got some other one, the Airport Board of Inflowments. And, um, I would like to make a recommendation that we reappoint Mr. Glenn Green III and Mr. Charles Taylor. I'm just gonna take a vote. Just to make y'all aware, the, the appointments to the Airport Commission, those are, are recommended by council and have to be submitted in to the governor and the governor and them have to do background checks and all that before they're actually appointed to the board. And those two, we got two positions on that board, one is a.
I nominate Glenn Green to be on the board again, he's on there now.
You've got, you've got Mr. Glenn Green and Mr. Tommy Perms on there, but their terms have expired.
Yeah, Tommy was a now getter in, in the Air Force, he does a lot about.
And I'm District Seven, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, we, we're gonna, are we gonna vote on those two recommending to the governor?
Charles Taylor and Glenn Green here.
Vote on them separate?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, the first committee's, uh, requires a motion. I got a motion, the second, second. All right, all in favor? All right, the next committee is the, the airport, it's, uh, Glenn Green and Charles Taylor, requires a motion.
I'll make a motion before him doing that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Fourteen, PD Regional Transit Authority update, Dodge, P D R T A, second.
Thank you, Chair, Council, um, administration for allowing me to come and speak for a few minutes about, um, some exciting things I have to share. And I just wanted to be able to give an update, kind of, on the transit, um, system and everything we have going on in Dillon County, um, and beyond. And, um, so I wanted to, I did share a presentation and got it up now, but I'll definitely run through this and any questions you may have, I'd be glad to answer. First off, I want to thank council, three years ago, we were working toward this plan to try to figure out what that may look like in Dillon County and we were able to, to, uh, you know, come up with some service that, that made sense for Dillon County to be able to have connections between some of the rural communities, um, have a workforce component to it and as well as the fixed route systems between some of the areas. And, um, so I'm here to kind of talk about that and talk about, you know, potential, you know, what, what we have potentially coming up in twenty-three, twenty-four, P D R T A. Um, so, we, we have, um, we operate six counties. I know we have council members here that may not, uh, be familiar with everything that's, that's happened in the past, but P D R T A covers states, counties, um, Florence, Marion, Dillon, Marlboro, Chesterfield, and Darlington Counties. We, we actually, the, um, I'll cover that in a minute, but it's a pretty big area, as you can see, similar to what, uh, Care South covers, um, as far as the, the area, I think they have, also have Lee County. But, um, you know, the services itself, um, across our board, uh, every month, after month, right now, we've seen growth and, and, um, a lot of expansion on the workforce side of things, um, that we're, that we're seeing happening, um, across the board and a lot of, uh, invitations to meetings to, to talk about transit and how public transit's gonna be able to help as we move forward, so. Um, I think I've shared this before, but P D R T A has an app, um, that you can download on your iPhone or Android and it's actually a live track, a live GPS feed of our buses. So, you, as the bus is making a right-hand turn, you actually can see it on the app. So, um, a lot of our calls in, in the dispatch, in the middle of, of, of June or July, when it's really hot outside, people are waiting by bus stops for twenty minutes. They don't really have to do that. Now, they're waiting in the AC and they see the bus when it's about a mile down the road and they walk out and they catch the bus, which has really helped us a lot. Um, especially with that, um, those phone calls coming in. Just a couple of things, um, next year will be P D R T A's fiftieth anniversary and we're, we're proud of that. We plan to try to do some, some marketing stuff for that, but, um, and the biggest thing is that, um, we're still here. And there was some ups and downs for quite some time and, um, the growth that we've experienced in past four or five years, you know, I'm, we're proud of it and thankful for that, we're heading in that direction. Um, I mentioned we're a pretty big coverage area, thirty-five hundred square miles. Um, we, you know, run the six counties, we also run service to Myrtle Beach every day from Marion County and from Lower Florence County. Taking folks to work three hundred and sixty-three days a year now. Uh, Christmas Day and Thanksgiving Day, we don't run those routes anymore, that's the only days we don't run it. Um, so, we are the third largest, the largest in the state, and as far as landmass, the largest, the third largest in the country, in the United States. So, it's a pretty, pretty big, uh, service area. Uh, most recently, we just had our task conference, um, in Columbia, that's the Transit Association of South Carolina. P D R T A was named, uh, Transit Provider of the Year for twenty-twenty-three. Um, that's really based on the work we've done just in the past year and Dillon County is a part of that. Um, you know, being able to, to bring this service that we, we have here now to a rural area, that's not happening in a lot of places. And, uh, seeing the benefit from and kind of that growth, um, is, is exciting. And we, um, we had a legislative reception, um, there in that conference and we had the most legislators in our area come than any other area. And they, they, you know, kind of spoke up and were proud of it. We had Harbor Freight there and, um, Dr. Candace Pathé, the Marion County Superintendent, um, who actually used P D R T A in the past, came in and kind of gave her testimony, which was amazing, and she did a really good job with that. But, um, this is kind of where we are, um, in Dillon, Dillon's press is up thirty-three percent year over year. Um, that means thirty, thirty-seven more trips up to this point in March than we had last year in March. Um, we're, um, just in the city of Dillon itself, we're averaging over a thousand trips a month. The connect from Loudon to Little Rock and Hamer is up twelve percent and that continues to rise as well. We're providing over five hundred trips right now for Harbor Freight each month. Those trips are actually demand response. They're calling us the day before, we're out there at four o'clock in the morning picking up their employees, taking them to work every day. Um, and then we're actually, um, at four AM, but we're actually taking some of their second shift home now. And we're looking to phase in more of that. And, you know, I talked, um, to Mr. Tim, we, we, we're hopeful that we're gonna be able to bring in additional industry partners. That's the one thing that, you know, for economic development in the county, I would like for us to be able to do because we have a model now that show it, it works. So, being able to bring some, some of the other players in, I think is gonna be our next steps. Um, based on our current data, we are spending over twenty-eight thousand trips in Dillon County for this, for this fiscal year. Um, recently, uh, well, not recently, on April tenth, we're starting new service to the PD Commerce Center in Florence, which is Reese Foods, um, Pepsi Performance Foods, Niagara Bottling, that entire group. Uh, we've done many lunch and learn of those locations and one thing that we've learned is there's a lot of folks in Dillon County working in that commerce center. And these industries see the need, they want to be able to, uh, sustain, retain some of these employees instead of having turnover. So, one thing they're asking for us to do is look at connections from Dillon County to Florence. Um, on the opposite of that, Dillon County Industries won't, won't suffer from Florence to Dillon. So, we're looking at that and how we'll be able to have, uh, connections both ways. So, we're actually bringing folks from the Florence and Marion region to Dillon County, but also for those that are already currently employed outside, make sure they can maintain their, you know, their employment and bring those resources back into Dillon County. Um, let's see, uh, we are looking to, um, this fiscal year, in fact, we've already ordered some, but, uh, we haven't started the permanent bus stop placements. And that is something that's on our radar, we actually already have some, and Dillon County is our next step. Um, I, I anticipate, we're already starting to do some encroachment permits, but we should have bus stops going up between May and June this year in, in Dillon County. And, um, and those are permanent shelters, uh, permanent bus stops. Uh, one thing that we're doing right now is I'm working with Darlington County School District and we've looked at, um, a lot of areas where our fixed routes kind of tie into where we have a lot of, um, folks riding, but not only that, there may be ten or twelve kids getting on the school bus in the morning and the pouring now raining. So, we, what we're doing is we're gonna work with the school districts in Darlington County and I'm gonna do, do the same thing in Dillon County if that's possible. But basically be able to partner, put bus shelters where it makes sense. If there's a residential area where there's a lot of kids and that bus stops in the morning, afternoon, and they're actually, you know, picking up quite a few kids, why don't we look at putting bus shelters in those locations? And then they're out of the elements, you know, if it's pouring now raining, you know, in the morning at seven o'clock, they don't have to be wet the entire day, they actually can wait in that area. That's something we're working toward. Uh, and then more, more workforce, uh, we, we gotta hire some more drivers. Right now, we have, uh, about five drivers in Dillon County, we're gonna need a few more, uh, to be able to do what we know we need to do in, in this next fiscal year. And, uh, I mentioned earlier, working with economic development and trying to phase in more workforce. And then, uh, Flats Study Area, they're actually doing, helping us with the feasibility study, so we have a consultant coming in and we'll do a feasibility study to look at our entire, you know, service schedule and, and try to improve upon that. you know, service schedule and try to improve upon that. We are, this is the interesting thing here and this, this number is going to continue to grow, but right now, out of everyone that's using our system, 44% that boards our bus, they're either going to work or coming from work. And that's, you know, obviously a big economic impact there. 18% are going to school, so that's working with Northeastern Tech, Francis Marion, Fox Johnson Tech, places like that. 21% is going for medical purposes and then 20, and 17% is personal. A lot of times that's pharmacies, doctor appointments, just, just different things. This is another one, access to a car. Our latest survey shows, last year it was 7, it was 79%. This year, 81% of those surveys said they don't have access to a car, 90% say they do. And then we drill down a little bit further, sorry, go back to that one real quick. 68% say they have zero access or no cars, 20% say they do have one car, and then 12, 12 more percent say they have two, two or more. So there are cars there, but a lot of times that's multiple, multiple people in a household. Someone may be going to work early in the morning and then leaving folks at home with no vehicle. So that's, that's why it's important. Age ranges, 40 to 60 years old are 40%, 60 years and older, our seniors, 27%, so over a quarter of everyone that's using our system. Earlier, I mentioned the large number of workforce and that's mainly your green and your orange there, 20 to 60 years old that's currently using the service. And then we're working to grow that, the children. How PD RTA is funded, 68% of what we do is covered on the federal side. We do have some, you know, state mass transit funds that comes directly from SDO, TDOs, public transit, and then we have to have local, local matching fund, which is kind of what we were doing three years ago when we came before council and the city and then some of these other partners that I'll, I'll mention in a minute. But we, the orange slice, if we don't have it, we don't have the blue and green, we don't have access to it. And then if we don't access that, it goes somewhere else, it goes to another state and the money's just not, not used in South Carolina. So, you know, the orange slice is just as important as the rest of it because without it, we can't do anything. So that's, that's that. And I just listed some of our partners here in Dillon County, obviously the county, city of Dillon, Lada, Lakeview, Harbor Freight, CARE South, McLeod, Economic Development. I put 23, 24 because that's something I hope we can work toward. Trinity Behavioral, First Bank, Anderson Brothers Bank, Care First Foundation, the Northeastern Technical College, Office of Public Transit and Federal Transit Administration. And, you know, who are we missing? Because, you know, we are looking to grow this even further to do more for what, you know, the, the area itself. So always open to suggestions and any phone calls or recommendations that y'all can give will be, would be vital. So moving forward, I know we're toward the end of the, the current three year agreement we had in place and, you know, what I would hope is that county looks at kind of the growth and where we are and, and, and consider renewing that basically. Even though fuel and insurance has gone up, we're, we're looking to bring in hopefully more local partners so that the, the ask would not increase. Our, our future goal is that as you bring in partners, we won't be as heavily dependent on the county and municipalities. We'll be able to provide, you know, receive more funding from, from other folks that are, you know, also using the service and then lower that, that need from municipalities. Questions do you have for Matt?
Mr. Chair, if you might, I'd like to ask you a question too. You mentioned Florence, Flats, Florence Area Transportation Study. Is that a study in Dillon County?
No, sir, they're doing a study. From that study, it's going to give us a lot of knowledge on what we're currently doing and it will be something that we can transfer right over to Dillon County. So they're, they're covering, it'll be mainly the Flats area region. So that's going to be most of Florence, I think goes into a part of Marion, Darlington, lower Florence County, Tennessee area.
I know Flats covers.
But we duplicate all that. So I mean, whatever, whatever's going to be good for, 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 you know, some of our other areas, that process and the way that we build our routes, you know, we, we feel like, you know, we're doing a pretty solid job. We're always open to, to improve upon that and that's really why we're going through that process.
You had a lot of statistics on the number of trips, the age of people, how many cars you had and so forth, if I understand all that correctly.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any statistics on how many people are actually riding?
As far as-
You mentioned a few come from Lakeview and Lakeview's in my district now. I'm just curious because if we're going to fund a portion of it, especially with a commitment for the next three years.
Yes, sir.
I'd love to understand what, what they asked.
Your, the Lakeview area itself is, is auto demand response right now. So we're taking between two and three employees that work for Harbor Freight, that's the only ones that are reaching out. I do believe that one thing we have to do in that area is, and we have medical appointments, we have some folks that are taking to go to grocery store, but Lakeview is probably is the least used area right now. That's something that we need to work toward to improve it. And as far as the service itself, that 28,000 trips, you probably have, right now with Harbor Freight, we're between 30 and 40 employees that are using the service. That number's going to really blow up and expand, but as far as the system in general, to give you an idea, what we're doing in, in the Florence region, we have about 1,200 individuals that are constantly riding. Not all of them ride every day. I think in Dillon County right now, we probably have about 250 that are, that are our everyday riders that are, that are, that are using the service and some, you know, some are across the, across the region, some of them will ride once a week to go to a store, some of them are riding three days a week to go to dial. It just, it just really depends on, on the individual and the day. There are rides per hour metrics right now in Florence because of just the sheer population, we're averaging about 14 trips per hour. So every hour the bus is on the road, at least 14 individuals step on the bus and Dillon right now, we're about 27 and 8. So every hour we run the Dillon Express, seven or eight different individuals are stepping on the bus and stepping off.
I'm not opposed to max transit.
Yes, sir.
Not, not opposed to public transportation, but we're giving the people a ride.
Yes, sir. And it's, it is, we are providing-
We're, we're actually providing service.
Fair free.
We, we are, we're right, it is fair free. It's just like a cab or Uber or anything else we want to do.
Yes, sir.
Is there a big consideration of charging for that?
We can-
And I'm not saying a million dollars, maybe a dollar.
Yes, sir. So that's a great question.
28,000 trips, just a little bit goes a long way.
You're right. Unfortunately, fare box revenue is not considered part of that orange slice and that's a, that's a federal transit situation that I would look for them to change. But for, and what I can do with a thousand dollars in local revenue, I got to have $10,000 in fare box revenue. So it's, for us, it's, in a lot of our rural communities, Marlboro County, Marion County, Chesterfield County, they're all fair free right now because of that same reason. If I can work hard to get two more partners at the table to give a thousand dollars, it offsets 10,000 fare box revenue. The butts in the seat for us for future years increases our federal funding. So the more people we have riding the bus, because it may be fair free, increases the amount of federal fund that we get for the service.
Which also increases the ask. Unless you get private parts.
Yeah, and that's the goal.
Yes, sir.
Is that we continue pushing toward that. And we have, we're having those, those conversations.
Certainly as a county, we, we support you asking private parts there too.
Yes, sir.
Quick question for the Lakeview area, the rural area, do you have a schedule and how are you advertising?
So it's demand response, our website, you know, we've, we've done flyers, we, one thing we're doing and I, and we just had some transition in our staffing, but one thing that I want to do is work closer with, especially with senior citizens organization and, and go do, you know, we do a lot of lunch and learns in industries, but there's nothing to keep us from going to Lakeview and scheduling, you know, a Tuesday at 10 o'clock where folks can get on the bus, they see that the bus is clean, that the driver's friendly and then actually run, run a route, bring, so show them that, you know, the bus can, can get you to wherever you want to get to. So we will do more of that and working with the local governments. We are finally kind of where we are. Like everyone else, we face some struggles with, you know, finding, getting CDO drivers, getting drivers, period, but we have come a long ways in that regard and so we'll do more about getting the word out there. Our app that we have, if you download it, we push alerts out on it so you can get alerts on, on the app, but other than social media, website, we haven't done a ton of printed materials other than schedules, but that's something we can certainly work toward improving on.
Okay, so as of now, there's no schedule for Lakeview other than calling to-
It's on demand. They call us today ahead of time and there's really no fixed schedule because we'll go everywhere. All in Dillon County right now, we're picking people up, every community that you have in Dillon County. Obviously some are, some are more than others, but I think it's more, it's about just educating people, making them aware and we'll do, we'll do more of that. The demand response piece is a more, it's not as cost effective as a fixed route bus because you've got one driver going to pick up. And we try to multi-load, get groups of people, but if you go on to Lakeview, sometimes you're going to go for one person and that's just, that's how it is. But if that one person's going to dialysis three days a week and getting treatment that's extending their life, for me, it's worth it. And that's, that's kind of why we do what we do, it's a public service.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it. 15th approval of Gordon Park Shelter Plan.
Mr. Chair, we had a meeting with Bliss Products and Reverses to the Gordon Park Shelter Plan and we were told we would have a, the bids back today, but we don't have a bid on the project yet, so we're going to go ahead and table that and hopefully we'll have it for our next meeting.
Motion to table that.
I made a motion to table it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? 16th approval of Florence Regional Airport Per diem increase.
Members of council, y'all know that we are part of the Florence Regional Airport, Dillon County, Marion County, and Florence County. It was created, as you see, by the Code of Law 5511610, which created the district. All their policies, any changes to policies, the counties have, each county has to approve and they, their per diem policy's been in effect since I think 19, for 25 years and what they're asking council to do is to approve the change into per diem, as you see there, from the $150 a quarter to $500 a quarter. It won't, it's not costing the county anything, it's in their monies, but in order to get that policy changed, each county has to approve it.
Motion to approve that. Got a motion in a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? 17th Transfer Station Engineering Services Agreement with Smith Garner.
Mr. Chair, just as y'all know, we're working on the transfer station out at the landfill. We have been working with Smith Garner, who is our engineers on that project, but we have not had agreement in place and I'd like to ask council's approval to approve the engineering services agreement with Smith Garner on the transfer station.
Motion. Make a motion.
I make a motion to approve that.
Got a motion, in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? Is here.
You, the terms of the contract, tell us what that is.
I'll get you a copy of that, but it's basically what we had agreed to, I think y'all had agreed to with them, but we finally got them to put it in writing so we can get a signature.
It's what we already do.
Yes, sir. Yep.
All in favor? Any opposed? 18th Landfield Environmental Monitoring Services Agreement with Smith Garner.
As Mr. Townsend just mentioned, this is a proposal for our environment, our monitoring of our wells at the landfill. It's something we have to do semi-annually every year and we've been doing it and working with Smith Garner, but we didn't have a signed contract with him. So we've asked him, as we did with Doug, when, to give us a signed agreement for our monitoring of our well, well sites at the landfill. So I'd like to ask council's approval to approve that.
Would that be for a year?
It would be for a year.
For a year?
And they, what they have to do is they have to monitor those wells and then they give us a semi-annual every six months to monitor and report that have to be sent into the state.
I'd like to suggest that we request a competitive bid on the next, so we request a competitive bid on the next time we do.
And Matthew and I, Mr. Hamilton and I had talked about that, the situation we got is that they've been doing it for all these years and if we're bringing you in, you're going to hand up, have them to get, they're going to have to go back and do all their background stuff and all that too, so.
I'd just feel like giving the chances to be the price.
That's right.
I made a motion.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? 19th Security System Repair, that Judicial Center.
Mr. Chair, we've had a situation that's occurred down at the Judicial Center, the electronic system controls the doors and the cameras has failed. This system's been in place for, since it was put, the Judicial Center was finished. It is really sold source, so you can't really bid this one out, but to go in and fix that camera system and the locking and security down there for the judges and all that is going to cost the county $32,523.97. This will be through LNS Electronics. Daniel has looked through this and reviewed it from the IT side of it and it's something that's going to have to be put in place if we're going to secure, provide the security down there.
Mr. Chair, we identified some places in the budget, we going to get that front?
One of the things that I talked with Chairman also about is also that we split this up between the Sheriff's Department and the Master's Office. Right now, it is not a budgeted item because it is a, an emergency situation, so you could take it out of contingency.
You have a contingency fund?
There's enough to cover, I think, under contingency.
Okay. Sold source, we don't have a choice.
That's right.
Wires, a motion.
I made a motion, trit, so, if there is a sum.
In a second.
Second.
Motion, I say, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number 20th Radio Tower Repair.
You probably, some of you's already heard, we had a, the repeater system on the fire tower for fire departments that went down. That system, that repeater system was put in 20 years ago. It is all, that tower is the TV tower, so they will only allow a certain group to go in to, to climb that tower and work on it in order to, just to climb the tower and put in the new wiring and repeater on the tire is $22,500. It is, it's very costly. Daniel was looking into this, even if we move forward on it tonight, we're talking about, it's going to be several months out before it can be fixed. So we're looking now to see what options we have out there to find the money for this to do, to fix the repeater and climb the tower and do the work is going to be right at $82,058.
It's been 20 years since we've, we've done that, I think 20 years old and you can't be prepared if it does, it'll weigh down, you have to pay somebody climbing it again.
That's right.
I talked to the fire chief in Oak Grove and Lada and they said right now they're operating off the EMS tower, it's at 600 feet.
That's right.
They said they can hear everything clear, but it said before it just went down, it's at 400 feet. They were having all kinds of static and half of them couldn't hear it and it says if we do replace it, if we, if we could put it up higher, it would show a different noise.
I would suggest to council that we take this under advisement and, and look and see if we can use the Geobank funds for it.
Mr. Harper, I wouldn't just come out of the next budget, you said it'd be several months anyway. I think we, first one, any action, it's got to be done, but.
Right now.
You need to, you need to vote to at least move forward, Doug.
Move forward with the planning process.
Planning to get somebody to bid.
Yeah.
Right, right now, they're using the EMS tower and fire trying to operate when the EMS and they're getting calls and stuff and they said it's really, really clear than what they had before.
That's right. It just causes a lot of-
Process, get it bid.
I make a motion to Administrator Daniel, start the process and get some bids and move.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? 21th Administrative Report, a Healthy Living Program.
Just a few items on, under Administrative Report. I sent you an email about the NACO program, which is Live Healthy Program. This is a program that NACO put out several years ago and I was shocked to find out that Dillon County was not a member. This allows our citizens of the county to have a drug discount card, a prescription discount card. I've given an example of one, one county in Pennsylvania, citizens saved over $13 million. It's a free program. I've sent you out an email on it. We're waiting to get the materials back so we can start advertising it and I'm going to be talking with Ms. Finkley to see if we can get it put into Dillon Herald to let our citizens know. Prescription drug card is free, you can get Dillon discounts and also health discounts. Per person is like $5.95 for one person or a family is $7.95. Again, it's a very inexpensive program, prescription card is free, and our citizens have been missing out on that, so we want to just pass that on, and it's very simple to use, you can use it at most of every pharmacy here in Dillon County.
I made a motion.
I mean, it's free, it's not...
The donor is...
Just wanted to make your way to it.
Yeah, great news. Thank you.
And I understand that you can also use it for your pet prescriptions if you get them at CVS.
I need that.
Just to make you aware, before I come on council, council had approved to purchase a truck for the landfill. Originally, let me figure this out right here. This truck was a Mack truck, and it was coming in, we had been quoted at that time $222,000, but knew that there was potential for an increase, especially with the market is at this point. Mack come back to us, and that truck price had gone up to $241,000. But we were able to find a new truck, a Peterbilt, which is larger than the Mack, and got it for $234,000. I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. It should be, it should be in this week, not first of week.
Appreciate you looking at it.
The other one was going to still take us three or four more months down the road. Me and Ms. Dawkins and several of y'all have had several conversations recently about the litter issues. I met with James today and Campbell and talked with him, and we're going to be working on this, starting to do some charging for littering. We also, he'll be going to the academy to get his certification. One of the things that we found is we do have a litter control ordinance. It still might need, we may need to look at, and I passed it on to the attorney, and getting a little bit more teeth in it on cost-wise. But we can write some of these tickets now, and I've told Mr. Campbell, if we catch people littering, they need to be written a ticket. If it gets to the Master's Office and the Master's are not charging them or making them pay, then it's on the court system. We're going to be working on that. But we've got some issues. One of the things I did notice in looking in is where some counties have a nuisance ordinance, we don't have a nuisance ordinance. There's a place for it in our code of ordinances, but we don't have one. The same issue goes back to, as I mentioned to y'all earlier, is that the state of South Carolina, the legislature years ago enacted law to allow municipalities to go in and clean up lots, tear down buildings that were dilapidated, and put it on the tax notices of the owners. In South Carolina, counties cannot do that. It has gone to the legislature, the House has passed it, I think, for the last three years, but it gets held up in the Senate. I know our delegation, our senators, all been supportive of it, but we've got one senator in the state of South Carolina that holds it up every year, and that's according to Senate law, one senator can stop a bill from passing. So we're working on that with association of counties, and hopefully that, we'll get some traction on that near the end of this legislative session. One of the things that Ms. Dawkins talked about today, she's got a couple of sites that are really not just trash, but they're dunks. And I've talked with Jason Lambert, with D Hick, and he's going to be investigating those, too, because if they're piling stuff out on property and they don't have a permit, then they're violating the D Hick laws, too. So we're going to be working on that. But we do need to, anytime you see our senator and a House member is pushing to get that law passed in South Carolina where counties can charge and put on the taxes for any cleanups. But we'll be working on some of that, and as y'all know, Larry and his group has been doing some cleanups. We cleaned up, as Mr. Townsend said, today, a park over at Fork, and he's going to be working next week on the park, getting the trash up out at the park in Oakland also. But we'll be working on those.
Mr. Harper, can I ask a question about the nuisance and cleaning up properties? Cleaning up properties and putting it on their taxes. Sometimes the people doing the litter and dumping the trash ain't the ones that own the property.
Right.
In that particular case, you going to let the property owner clean it up?
If that's, if that case would go with your litter ordinance, so you'd be able to address it, you could charge them for that.
A lot of times that is the case.
Yeah, and we're going to be working on some of that. We did get a grant this year, just got it in this week, cast it got in for $20,000 to do some stuff dealing with litter, too, so we're going to get some new cameras, up to that cameras, too.
Who's going to watch it?
That'll be handled by James. Just to make y'all aware, item D there, we have applied for the, two grants for the new EOC, Emergent Operation Center. One of those is a NESA grant, and NESA has come on board and said they will pay $20,000 for the planning of that facility. We've also put in earmark requests to Senator Graham's office for $2 million on that also. So we know that we're getting a planning grant from NESA, and hopefully we may get that earmarked from Senator Graham's office. And then to make y'all aware, a couple of things. At our next meeting, Spectrum will be here to give us an update, give a presentation, and also answer any questions I might have. We had a good meeting the other day with the new staff person with Spectrum, their attorney, and they're looking at the June date of having things, most everything completed except for the outline areas where they have to run to. But as I told y'all in the email I sent to you, if you'll let me know any locations, addresses that you want to check on, if you'll get them to me, and I'll forward them on to Spectrum. I sent about, probably about 20 yesterday, so if you'll get those for me. And then just several items just to remind y'all of, if you haven't done your ethics report yet, please get it completed, because don't wait until next week to do it, because if you do, you may, you may not get an answer up there, because it's taken me a week for myself to get mine updated so I could even submit it. And then you got to hand out on the South Carolina Association of Counties Conference that Mr. Silla will be working on your reservations for that. Everything goes according to plans, you'll have the audit here next month. Finally got it, the auditor finally returned my call. Jamie had been having problems getting them, and the auditor has told us that they will have the audit completed next week and submitted to us and go with us in April. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. I'll be doing a great job. We all love students in Florida, and we all appreciate that.
Members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to serve y'all, but most important citizens of Dillon County, as I said to many of you just by calling to me, and I look forward to all of us having some great successes and moving forward.
Great question, session.
Mr. Chairman, we did need an executive session on...
Yes, sir.
Contractual matter for legal advice.
Number twenty-two, executive session, contractual matter for legal advice, require